Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now bring the May 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education to order. It is 7:00 PM. 248.22. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Madison Buchanan and Jeffrey Trimborn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where we just stand, one nation, under God, for visible and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to have the secretary of order.
Alright, so we have Madison Buchanan. My name is Madison Buchanan from the world's greatest elementary school, home of the Taft Tigers. This year, I'm in 5th grade and Mr. Van Waschenova and Ms. Gildersleeve and Ms. D'Amico, is it D'Amico?
D'Amico.
D'Amico Gildersleeve are my favorite teachers. My favorite thing about being at Taft Tiger is that I got to participate as a cheerleader in our school's cheerleading team. Also, all of my teachers are very nice. My favorite things to do are to play with my younger cousins and to play with my dog whose name is Princess. I would like to thank my teachers and my parents for supporting and loving me. So, next, we have Timothy Trimborn. My name is Timothy.
Jeff Jeffrey.
I'm sorry, Jeffrey, I can't see, just turned 40. My name is Jeffrey Trimborn from the world's greatest elementary school, home of the Taft Tigers. This year, I'm in the 5th grade and Ms. Gildersleeve and Mr. Van Waschenova and Ms. D'Amico are my teachers. My favorite thing about being a Taft Tiger is being on the safety squad because I love to help the younger students to behave, be respectful, and to be safe. I also love coming to school to learn, see my teachers, Mr. Cox and the rest of the staff. I would like to thank Mr. Cox, Ms. G, Mr. V, Ms. D'Amico, and Ms. Harkeema for always being there for me at school. I would also like to thank my dad, my mom, my brothers, and my sisters for always being there for me. Family is so important to me.
Madison, we have an award for you and for Jeffrey. I'm going to hand it to you. The award says, "In recognition presented to Jeffrey Trimborn of Taft Elementary School for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools." Thank you. Madison, do you have anybody that you brought with you?
My mom, my dad, and my sister, and my nana.
Mom.
And your principal, Mr. Cox?
Thank you.
A pleasure. Want to get a couple of pictures?
Get you in there.
Thank you, Madison. Thank you again.
Thank you guys.
Madam Secretary, if you could please, or, I'm sorry, did you have some comments that you wanted to make?
Yeah, is there exit in the building? I just want to say thank you to Madison and JT, but more importantly, to Principal Cox, who's one of the finest educators I've ever been around. He puts kids first, so greatly appreciative of that.
Thank you.
I'll flip it back to you.
Sorry about that. I got off schedule here. Next item on our agenda, folks, is 249.22, which is a roll call. Ms. Hines?
Yes. Mr. Buckaloo.
Present.
Ms. May.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Mr. Albrecht.
Present.
Hines, present. Mark, Mr. Neal will be absent.
Yes.
And President Cox.
Present.
Let the record go, 6-1.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, 250.22, is recognitions and presentations, and I'm going to pass the gavel over to Dr. Dignan.
Thanks, President Cox. Good evening, Board. Good evening, community. It's with great pleasure that we're honoring a lot of our students. That's why we're here as an institution, are to kind of celebrate all the great things that our kids are doing. I want to start off this evening with the Wayne Memorial High School band, and I'd ask Mr. Wolf to make his way up there. Our band this year has collected, you're going to go up to the podium up there, yep.
Good luck.
As he's making his way through the wrestlers.
Yeah, good luck.
Mr. Wolf has been tremendous. He's been with Wayne Westland School the last few years, and he's building a juggernaut at Wayne Memorial. Not just the hardware, but the relationships and stuff that he builds with our students is incredible. And they've had a performance last Thursday that was incredible, so thank you, Mr. Wolf. I'm going to turn it over to you. Real quick, he'll hand out the certificates outside of here, but I do want the band to come up and get a photo, so I'll turn it to you, Mr. Wolf.
Absolutely. Thank you for your kind words. Thank you for, first of all, your support as a community, as a school board, as an administration. We appreciate your support because without that, our students wouldn't be able to have the success that they have. A little bit about why our students are being recognized. We have our Symphony Orchestra, who participated in MSBOA District Orchestra Festival and earned a rating of a two, which is the second highest rating you can get at that festival. And then, our band, our Symphony Band, received a rating of a one, which is the highest rating you can get at MSBOA District Band Festival. Can we give a round of applause for both those students? I won't take too much more time, but a little bit about why that rating is a big deal is these students are evaluated by three professional judges that are trained to evaluate on tone, rhythm, technique, interpretation, and our students have worked incredibly hard for the ratings that they earned at those festivals. And so, it's something that I truly believe is just the start of what we can do, and I look forward to building on that moving forward. Thank you all for your support.
Yeah, Mr. Wolf, don't go too far because I'm going to, I'd like to introduce Ms. Bonner, who is the band director at John Glenn High School and has done a phenomenal job in a short period of time. Her and Mr. Wolf kind of collaborated together, so I'm going to have them speak on that right now.
Sure. Well, hi, me again. At Wayne Westland, we've had a wonderful opportunity that started this year where Wayne Memorial has had a winter percussion program that's been very successful the last several years. This year, we decided to open it up to as a Wayne Westland Community School District Winter Percussion Ensemble. That way, it included all the students from the district. And with collaboration with Mrs. Bonner and the John Glenn staff and the Wayne Westland Community, we've been able to build on that program, and our Wayne Westland Community School District is now a five-time state champion. Wow. For winter percussion, so we'd like to give them a round of applause.
Good evening. Thank you for your support of our arts and our music programs in our district. We greatly appreciate it. We ran our Winter Guard program at John Glenn, where we also included all of Westland Schools, Wayne Westland Schools. We had 16 members in our Winter Guard program of John Glenn, Wayne Memorial, a student from Adams, and a student from Stevenson Middle School as well. They had one of their best seasons. I'd like to thank the staff that worked very hard. We have Bethany Lillygren, Maya Tousen, Chloe Tousen, Brittany Buckner, and Sarah Larson, who are part of our staff that ran their program. They went to three competitions in which they earned the ability to go to state championships through MCGC. When they went there, they performed in Regional A competition, and they ended the highest that we've ever had at Wayne Westland, fourth in the state in their classification. So, very proud of our students at Wayne.
I'm going to ask you and the band to come up in front if we'll fit to get a picture. Again, we'll hand out the certificates outside, but again, I want to say congratulations to our students and our band, but I do want to give some credit to, to one of the number-one fans of the music in Wayne Westland, that's Kevin McKay, if he could stand up. Appreciate all your support. Guys, you're going to face the clock if you can.
And the board will photobomb you.
I'll try to behave myself.
Good job, Chloe.
Mr. Wolf, may I borrow a comment from you?
Yes.
Hey, Ben!
They would!
Thank you. Up here.
We can give them one more round of applause. Thank you, guys. Is there exiting? I'm going to ask Mr. Malloy make his way to the.
Oh. How many graduating seniors do we have?
Congratulations.
Have my back.
Hey, Mike, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Not easy, is it?
Hey, real quick, the next group up, and I'm going to talk about them a little bit because they were the number-one ranked team in the state for a great duration of their season as our bowling team. And it's amazing what they've accomplished. I've been here two years, and to see, read all the articles about them has been incredible. I'd like Mr. Malloy to kind of introduce them, and then we'll come and take a picture out here and hand the certificates out front. Mr. Malloy?
All right. Well, my name is Jason Malloy. I'm the athletic director at John Glenn High School. I've been, oh, whoa, that is. I've been blessed enough to walk into a great situation with some great coaches and a great culture of sports, especially when it comes to our bowling teams. Ralph Cabeldo, his wife Kim, and the rest of our coaching staff have done a phenomenal job, not just this year, but over the years. And you looked at the history of our bowling team, they have been doing well. And it's all because of their hard work and dedication. So, first of all, we'd like to thank you guys for recognizing our bowling team, but they are doing a phenomenal job. We look forward, you know, me and Coach always talk about how we're looking at going to the next level and actually winning that state championship. It's not about just the sports, and that's why I can appreciate our coaches because they really look at being a student athlete, and I think that's what pushes us to the next level. I know a year ago, we had an individual state champion as well, so kudos to our bowling team. They were on Channel 4 news this year, being undefeated. Our JV team, our boys JV team, was undefeated as well, so they're doing a lot of hard work as it pertains to bowling, so let's give them a round of applause. And when you guys get an opportunity to come to a bowling match, it looks just like this in a bowling alley. It's packed in, but you will get a chance to see some great bowling, so our bowling team, would you guys like to come down and take a photo? Coaches, those who are here?
Staying with John Glenn, the next program, too, has had a storied tradition, and I credit a lot of that to their head coach, Bill Polk, who if you ask. If you ask anyone in the state of Michigan about wrestling coaches, Bill Polk's name will surface, and again, a lot of his wrestlers this year had tremendous accomplishments during their season and then in the postseason, so I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Malloy to say a few words.
Well, again, I was blessed to have walked into a great situation with Coach Polk. You know, as an athletic director, we want to be able to hand over the keys and know that our kids are in a great place, and I just walked into a situation where Coach Polk has been running a program that is top-of-the-line in the state of Michigan for a very long time. And it's very easy to see why. It's because he's there all the time, he cares for kids, he makes academics first and foremost, and you can see that he has love from his kids. And not just from his kids, but he has it from the parents also because he's built that culture over the years. They have won, they won the districts this year, they won the conference, he's won, the team has won seven, the last seven district championships, won the last 20 out of 22 district championships. We have seven people qualify for regionals and four went to the states. So, it's an amazing feat on what these young men and women are doing, and Coach Polk has championed putting our girls to the forefront, and we have some great outstanding girls who are wrestlers, who I look forward to winning a state championship as well next year. So, our program is awesome. We look forward. It's coming, it's coming, we're going to clap. We look forward to the things that we will continue to do with the new facilities that we're having. We have the Bottle Rockets that are coming to be a part of our program, the feeder program. We're just excited about all the new things that we have at John Glenn, and we're excited to have this program here, so let's give them a round of applause.
Hey, guys, if you could make your way down front for a picture.
Can we make everybody go down front? Coach Polk did ask, can we have a wrestling mat down there, too?
Mr. Buckaloo? You want to get back in the game?
I believe you're looking at greatness here, guys. You're looking at Mr. Buckaloo, who was the state winner in 1864.
I apologize, this is about a quarter of the team, we would have had more, but throughout the day, I was teasing the kids that they were going to have to give a speech, so I think a lot of them stayed home and petrified and showed up. They wouldn't dare.
Congratulations to the Rockets.
Thank you, guys. I just want you guys to remember, it's always a great day to be a.
Rockets!
Congratulations.
A pleasure, congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Coach. What, are you running for office or something?
We are going to stop there with that, ladies. I'm going to ask that Ms. Johnson come to the podium. The next program is our DECA program over at John Glenn High School. We actually had six students this year that qualified for Nationals, which is unheard of, especially coming out of COVID-19, and I still, Ms. Johnson hasn't admitted, I think some of it's the Detroit Economic Club partnership to work on some of the soft skills, but I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Johnson to talk about some of our award winners.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Dignan. I don't know where, oh, there they are. Okay, I was looking over here, they were standing over here for a while. If I could have my five come on up here by me. These five students, actually, I have six. Christina Fuller is a softball player, and she has a softball game, so she wasn't able to attend. These six students have been working ridiculously hard. They are all seniors this year, so they are all leaving me. They have to take hunter question tests at every single level. They have to do business role plays at every single level. They competed at the district conference and qualified for the state conference, so I took them downtown Detroit for a weekend where they competed against 4,000 other students from the state of Michigan, and they qualified. I've never had six kids come home with plaques. This is the most I have ever had in 16 years, so I am super proud of these kids. But they qualified at the state level to attend the International Career Development Conference, so I got to take them to Atlanta, Georgia for a week, where they competed amongst 18,000 other students. They networked, they met business people from industry, they heard from amazing guest speakers, and they met a lot of new friends from all over the country, and it's such a great program. And I want to introduce Kaia Tolu, who is my chapter president. And Tina Vu, who is my vice president of career and chapter development. Quinstella Pennick and Shereen Elisiri actually competed as a team. They competed in, don't tell me, buying and merchandising, so they competed together. Tina, or I mean, Kaia competed in marketing communications. Tina took our school-based enterprise project, so they, she actually had to write a paper and got the school store certified nationally, so she, along with Christina, got to take that to the conference. And then Donovan Prater did a presentation. He did financial consulting, which is a sales presentation that he got to present at ICDC. So, all of these guys are amazing students, and I'm going to miss the heck out of them next year for sure.
Guys, if you'd come down front. Ms. Laitner, if you could make your way up there. The next group is from our William D. Ford Career Tech Center, our media production crew. It's amazing to see all the accolades and awards. I swear, every week, I was getting emails about some competition that we won, so I wanted to make sure that we highlighted some of the students there, so I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, my name's Myra Magg, R.C. Laitner, otherwise known as Ms. Mags, to my kids. I am actually a graduate from here. I graduated as a Rocket, as well as a career tech graduate in '06. It was important for me to come home and give my kids the opportunities that I wanted to have, and so, we have done what I think is at least the start of that work, right? And so, we've won a lot of things. Some of my kids are here today for us to be able to celebrate them, but we started off the year by winning, three of my students placed against adults in the Westland Public Library Photography Contest, which was pretty great. Then, we went on to have 21 students win 36 awards in the Regional Scholastic Art and Writing Award Competition, which is for the entire southeastern Michigan region. We compete against schools in Oakland County, in Washtenaw County, all the way across the board, private schools, public schools, et cetera, et cetera. We placed one of two, the highest as far as photography and digital art programs in that entire region. Of that group, seven students won what they consider to be first places, which are gold keys in the region, which means that they compete, they then go on to compete nationally. One of our students then won nationally, which puts them in the top 1% of all student artists in the United States. Just to give perspective, Andy Warhol won one of those awards, so like, these kids that win these, this is like, jumpstarts their careers. When we, like, but you know, we didn't like, just sit on that, so we did some more stuff. Then after that, we started submitting for exhibitions, so four of my students placed in the Museum of Contemporary Art Detroit's Teen Art Exhibition, which is very huge, like, just for perspective. I am an international artist who shows all sorts of places. I have not shown at the Museum of Contemporary Art for my own work. Then, I had eight students place 12 pieces in the Detroit Institute of Arts Teen Art Competition. I have not, also not shown at the Detroit Institute of Arts. So, I mean, my kids are doing incredible, wonderful things, and really, like, this program is something that has the potential to, you know, make them fall in love and be able to do this for the rest of their lives, and so, I really do appreciate the support that you guys had by having me come and get to show off my kids today.
Thank you. Can you and your students come down in front?
Come on, y'all. They, too, were afraid to come because they didn't want to say a speech.
No speeches.
Come on, tall person.
Thank you again, guys. Can we give them a round of applause? The next one, and I'm going to have to take this one, Ms. Samara and Mr. McColl couldn't make it this evening. It's from the William D. Ford Career Tech Center. It's called Breaking Traditions. We had a young lady that ended up being recognized by the Michigan Department of Education statewide, and she's in our FIRE Academy, and her name's Samantha Hard, and I'm going to have her, I don't see her yet, but, okay, she's hiding on me. I'm going to brag on Samantha before she comes down. Our FIRE Academy has really taken off in the last year, and the reason it's taken off is because of the two instructors we have there. Carrie and Josh do as good a job as anybody I've ever seen in the classroom. It's project-based learning at its finest. Samantha is a leader. When I go to the class, they always march in front of my window in full. When I go to the class, they always march in front of my window in full FIRE's gear. I go over there, I see her leading. They just had an event last week, which was incredible. They had an F-150 that they actually lit on fire and had to minister the jaws of life and take mannequins out of the vehicle. It was incredible. I just want to say Samantha is a pioneer and a trailblazer, and to be honored at a state level is incredible. So I want to call Samantha up to get a picture up here. Before I move on to the next one, I just want to say our FIRE program. We have seven kids that are either gonna go in FIRE service or EMT after they graduate, which is amazing. Again, the program is in its infancy, and I expect great things from the years to come. The next one is gonna be sports coaches and volunteers. I'm gonna ask Mr. Schulthe to come up there. Before he speaks, I just want to say it's cooled down in the audience with all the heat. But we started something two years ago, and really, the architect behind it has been Mr. Schulthe. He's provided the energy and making sure we have coaches. We started NFL Flag in the fall with competitive cheer. Boys and girls basketball and competitive cheer in the winter. And then high-velocity soccer and NFL Flag for our middle school kids. We've had thousands of kids that have participated, and it really's made a difference. It's really brought the community together, and it's just another thing, and a feather in the cap for a lot of our elementary and middle school students. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Mike Schulthe.
Superintendent Dignan, President Cox, members of the school board, and leaders of Wayne Westland Community Schools. My name is Mike Schulthe, and I'm here tonight to thank you for your support, your support of our elementary activities and sports. This year, we had more than 100 4th and 5th graders participating in NFL Flag football, over 120 4th and 5th graders participating in cheerleading in the fall, over 180 girls participating in basketball in the winter, over 330 boys participating in basketball in the winter, more than 190 girls participating in cheerleading in the winter, and more than 500 students participating in soccer this spring. We could not have done this without your support. It takes a village to raise a child, and we had the whole support of the whole community. There are some people who need to be thanked for that. Thank you to National Flag Football and High Velocity Sports for partnering with our football and soccer programs. Thank you to members of the John Glenn High School and Wayne Memorial High School Boys and Girls Basketball Teams, who are the referees at our elementary school basketball games. Thank you to all of our coaches, the elementary activity coordinators, elementary administrators and staff for supporting this and encouraging people to come out. Thank you to the custodians and the staff at our host sites of Wayne Memorial High School, John Glenn High School, and Franklin Middle School for being there for us to allow these events to happen. And thank you to the parents, community members, school board members, and Wayne Westland Community Schools leadership. Once again, without you, we couldn't have done this. We've received overwhelming support for these activities that were free to our students, to our families, and our data showed that over 90% of the families agreed and had satisfaction with achieving our three goals. And those three goals were to have fun, to improve skill, and to want to participate in this activity again. Thank you for your help in getting these programs going, for keeping them going, and I look forward to working with you to continue to help grow these activities in the future. Mr. Toko would now like to say a few words about this.
Dr. Dignan kind of stole my thunder at the beginning because I really wanted to say it. About a year ago, year and a half ago, we presented this, all these programs that we were going to be initiating in the district. And hiring Mr. Schulthe took it to the level where it needed to be. He brought it to light, and that's where we're at right now. If you look at the numbers, how they've grown, and they'll continue to grow. So I just want to thank Mr. Schulthe, and Maria Mitter isn't here, and Jenny Johnson. We're all definitely part of that whole process to get this off the ground, which took a lot of work and a lot of weekends, a lot of Friday nights, and continued up till this past Friday, and it will continue to grow as we move forward. So I just want to thank all of those for being, all those people for being part of this from the beginning.
And I just want to reiterate one thing. Mike and Jenny, I think if you were keeping score, were there more than anybody else, both on a Friday and Saturday, and taking time. And Jenny actually got her family involved with her nephew, who was very helpful. So again, Mike, just want to say thank you to your commitment and really bringing this to fruition.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm gonna have Ms. Sally Naloo come up. She's been waiting for, she actually had her PowerPoint up first. Sally started a couple of months ago, and what she's done has been truly incredible. We did not really have an English language learner program. We actually contracted with Wayne Risa. And Sally, in two months, has done an incredible job to really service all of our kids. And Sally, I just want to say thank you, and again, remind you, I'm gonna turn on the hourglass for you, so.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Dignan, colleagues and community. Thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, I'm going to share a very brief overview of the detailed plan that you received on our district English language learner plan. So Michigan Department of Education has a very specific criteria, criteria in defining and identifying what qualifies as an English learner. So when our parents come to enroll their child into our district, or any other district, they have to fill out a state language survey. If they answer yes to one of the following questions, which is if they speak, their primary language is another language other than English, or they come from an environment where a language other than English has a significant impact in their English language proficiency, then they qualify to be assessed on the WIDA screener. Okay? So if they, they would qualify if they scored a 4.7 or below. And if they receive, if they qual, if they fall into levels 1 through 3, they need direct services, lots of hours of direct services. Four or five, they can be monitored and serviced, supported as needed. So here you have our ELL instructional model, our district model. Through numerous meetings with teams and visiting schools, we've created a research-based best-practice model, instructional model for our English learners. As you can see, K through 12, we have co-teaching, coaching, push-in, pull-out. We have K through 8 feeder schools, and we have 6 through 12 sheltered classrooms. We also have PSYAP training, that's, we're going to have that district-wide. PSYAP stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. It's to make content material more accessible and understandable to our English learners. And it works actually for all students, for our high-achieving students, all the way to the students that need the most support. Before we begin on the elementary, middle, and high, I just want to remind you that you have the detailed plan of the staffing needs and number of transferring students into the feeder schools. So for the elementary, we have a total of 159 English learners. Out of that total, there's 133 English learners that fall to levels 1 through 3. They're the ones, again, who need the most hours of direct services. We chose feeder schools to best support those students. Three feeder schools were chosen, Walker, Elliott, and Wildwood. And the selection factors are below, basically their WIDA levels, and the instructional model slides that you saw before, the best practice, the push-in, pull-out. And we also factored in transportation routes, the proximity of the schools, and building capacity. Middle school, we have a total of 109 English learners. 77 of those students fell into levels 1 through 3. Adams was chosen as the feeder school, and the same factors were considered. High school, 127 total English learners. 108 of those students fall into the categories levels 1 through 3. We do not have them as feeder schools. They'll be at their home schools, and it works out pretty well because Adams, the students who go to the middle school at Adams, already feed into either Wayne Memorial or John Glenn. And so we're keeping their school, the schools as-is, they're not a feeder schools. And then here's a timeline that I started in February. We're in May now. We did, we interviewed all day today, teachers. We still have more interviews for Peres eventually. And tomorrow, we're going to start calling the parents. Basically, the timeline was the rollout. The district team has been collaborating to create a plan of action from the beginning. It's one of the high priorities they, we had as I came in. And before we go into questions, if you do end up having questions, I would like to thank a few people. First, Dr. Dignan and the executive team. I appreciate all your support, ongoing support, from the get-go. I want to thank Jennifer Curry for her open-door policy. Please forgive me every single second of your day. And for your, as a thought partner as well. I want to thank the Board for trusting in me from the get-go. Treasurer Kimberly May, I want to thank you for welcoming me, supporting me from the beginning, as she herself built an EL program from the ground up as well. So her expertise has been delightful, and it keep, keep on helping. I also want to thank, sorry, I kept going back, didn't I? I also want to thank all the principals and the staff. I mean, they've been, they've embraced the plan. We've had overwhelming responses. Yesterday, I sent out a PSYAP survey because we're having PSYAP training this summer, and already, and I only sent it to the three feeder schools, elementary. I've already, and I checked it maybe this afternoon, like around noon. 35 people already are attending the PSYAP training. That's a lot during the summer, you know? And that's all, any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that was a great cartwheel you did on the way to the lectern, too.
I'm sorry, may I just add a comment really quick? I just want to, just having the experience of having to build a program from the ground up, I just really wanted to just take a moment to say to my fellow Board members and Dr. Dignan how awesome Sally is. Just working with her, having a conversation, knowing her knowledge and the support that the students are gonna receive is awesome. The team that I've met thus far has been phenomenal, yes, and one of the members of the team is here. And they've been, I mean, just awesome. So I am so excited to have this program being built within our district and just knowing the support that our kids are gonna have.
Thank you, Ms. May. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is 251.22. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for citizens who wish to address the Board on items which appear on the agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to address the Board on agenda items this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, 252.22. Is there a motion on the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Albrecht, support by Dr. Weaver. Roll call, vote please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes?
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show 6-0, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, 252.22, is the Board of Education Committee report, beginning with 1, the Superintendent's Evaluation Committee, Vice President Albrecht.
Thank you, President Cox. A meeting to discuss the goals of the superintendent was called order on May 16, 2022, at 3:30 p.m. Present at the meeting were John Albrecht, Dr. John Dignan, Kimberly May, and Cheryl Watson, who took notes for us. Dr. Dignan reviewed his goals with the committee and outlined the following work. English and language arts and math specifically. The focus should be on Lexile scores and meet kids where they are. We need to focus on student growth and helping students develop skills. Students will continue to take the NWEA test. A growth goal will be established to reflect proficiency goals. A number of strategies are in place to support student growth and well-being. They include academic interventions, supports for English language learners, a restructuring of the multi-tiered system of supports, which will include a framework with common language to support academics and student behavior, options for credit recovery, college and career readiness, resources, structured educational development plans, coding and app development at the elementary schools to encourage critical thinking and problem-solving, social and emotional wraparound services for students and families through partnerships with Easter Seals and Concentric, and food pantries, which will be launched in the fall. All of our programs and initiatives will continually be monitored to ensure that they are benefiting students and families. Focus will continue on the following. Tier-one instruction and student supports, common tier-one assessments, consistent instructional practices, trimester meetings to analyze students and data, grade-level professional learning community meetings to analyze benchmark and tier-two and-three data. The district has conducted an academic audit. There are new numerous partnerships with business and industry that will lead to opportunities for our students, and there are opportunities for post-secondary students. Equity work will be embedded in the work that we do, remembering that this doesn't mean everyone gets the same thing. The formal evaluation of the superintendent is scheduled for Monday, June 13, at 5:15 p.m. A complete set of these minutes is included in the May 23, '22 Board of Education Meeting Agenda. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Excuse me, I got lost in it. The Finance Committee, Ms. May?
Thank you. Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools was held on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, beginning at 4:30 p.m. via Zoom platform. Dr. Anderson shared a revision to the Head Start budget. Dr. Dignan explained the letter of intent to purchase regarding the sale of the Benoy property. Mrs. Curry presented the purchase of REE 180 and Math 180 using grants to support our middle school students during the summer months. Mr. Wenzel shared upcoming grant technology purchases. Mr. Spiezak and Mr. Vander Zee presented information on the following. Point-of-sale system for the Culinary Arts Program, district network fiber cleaning and installation, and the district router project. The POS system will come before the Board in June. The network fiber cleaning and installation will come before the Board this evening. The district router project has gone out for bill and will bid, and will be funded with SIR funds. Mrs. Cleves shared the investment report, the monthly check register, and our budget to actual. Dr. Dignan thanked his staff, Amanda Dybus, Maria Mitter, Daryl Beebe, Mike Kapoka, for their work in securing partnerships with the city of Westland, Amazon, Easter Seals of Michigan, Deloitte, and Beaumont. Mr. Buckaloo praised the team for all of the positive things happening within the district. The meeting was adjourned at 4:59 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Those reports. Next item on our agenda is 253.22, which is a review and approval of business service items. Mrs. Cleves?
Yes, good evening. I come before you tonight with the recommendation to sell the former Tincom property. Agreement was included in your packet, and if you can now vote on that recommendation.
Motion to approve? By Mr. Buckaloo, support by Mr. Albrecht. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Weaver?
I'm sorry, how many acres is that property?
I'm sorry, how many acres is that property?
Number six, I believe.
Okay, and I'm sorry, if you could tell me again what the selling price is?
Did, did everybody get the information on this? Okay, do you have that in front of you?
I do. The purchase price for this property is five hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? Ms., I'm sorry, President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, Mrs. Cleaves?
The second item is a recommendation for a cooperative agreement. This would be between the City of Westland for the Jefferson Burns and Lincoln Johnsonfield.
Is there a motion? So move. By Vice President Albrecht, support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo, discussion?
Would you say this, this is going to be a one-dollar lease? It's a win-win.
Yeah.
It's a win-win for, for the community, for the school district.
Yeah. Other discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? And President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Cleaves?
The next up is a recommendation to purchase technology for Career Tech Center. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education to purchase a quantity of up to thirty-one Apple iMac computers. This will be to support the digital design programs at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. If approved, this purchase will be charged to the Ford Career Technical Center Equipment Grant Account, and this also includes three years of Apple Care coverage. The total cost of this purchase will not exceed sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Is there a motion? So move. Move by Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
Ms. May? Roll call vote?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion passes.
Thank you, Mel. Ms. Cleaves?
Next up is a recommendation to purchase title technology purchases. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education to purchase a quantity of up to one thousand one hundred thirty-three Dell Latitude Chromebooks, thirteen Chromebook cards, six Promethean boards. This price that I'm gonna read, this includes the shipping cost, licensing, and one year of warranty and support. These purchases will be charged to the building title accounts and will not exceed a total cost of three hundred seventy thousand eighty-four dollars.
Is there a motion?
So move.
By Dr. Weaver, support Mr. Albrecht. Discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, let the record show most, motion passes.
Thank you, Mel. Mrs. Cleaves?
Next up is a recommendation to approve the amended Head Start budget. As a requirement by the Office of Head Start in Wayne Metropolitan, which is our Head Start grantee, I'm requesting approval for Wayne Westland's Year Four amended Head Start budget. This covers the period beginning March first, twenty twenty-two, through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Due to the reduction of slots for the Head Start program, the allocation has been reduced to two million five hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. This is a reduction of three hundred eighty-six thousand forty-eight dollars. The reduction of these slots was generated due to the program offering additional full-day slots in lieu of the part-time slots. Additionally, we were awarded funding for COLA in the amount of sixty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars, and this amount will be allocated to staff salaries and benefits. If approved by the Board of Education, this budget proposal will be submitted to Wayne Metropolitan for approval.
Is there a motion? So move. Mr. Albrecht, support?
Support.
Support from Ms. May, discussion? Mr. Buckaloo?
Yeah, I asked this question, and Ms. Curry answered it at the Finance Committee meeting. What we're doing is we're moving from half-day sessions to full-day sessions, and that's going to better serve the community. Even though we're gonna have, I believe, fewer slots, we're going to be more successful in meeting the needs of the community, and so it's a good move.
And one thing I can say too, as a parent, oh my gosh, like when your kids are in preschool, it's such a hassle to stop what you're doing, go pick them up, go get them, you know? So this would be really nice, you know, on the parent's side as well.
Mr. Albert? Well, that's an important aspect, because the kids are having a blast at Head Start, and then they get taken out, and it's a big controversy for everybody. This seems, glad this is happening. Roll call vote please, Mel.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, let the record show, motion passes.
Ms. Cleaves?
Next up is a recommendation to approve emergency backup network routers. Based on the results of a, of a proposal review, I'm requesting board approval to award the following contract for emergency backup network routers. It will go to Presidio of New York, New York. The total cost of contracts for emergency backup network routers will not exceed a hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and ninety cents. This will include installation services and network routers and will be charged to bond and/or ESSER funds.
Is there a motion?
So move.
By Dr. Weaver, support?
Support.
Ms. May, discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Mrs. Cleaves?
Next up is a recommendation to approve fiber optic upgrades. Based upon the results of a public bid opening on May ninth, twenty twenty-two, I'm requesting board approval to award the following contract for specified fiber optic upgrades to AMCOM. They were selected as the winning bid. The total cost of contracts for the upgrades will not exceed three hundred two thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents and will be charged to bond and/or ESSER funds.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So move. Move by Mr. Albrecht, support by Dr. Weaver, discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Cleaves?
Next is the recommendation to purchase elementary and high school furnishings. I'm requesting board approval to purchase furnishings for Edison Elementary, Hamilton Elementary, Switzer Elementary, Ford Career Tech Center, John Glenn High School, and Wayne Memorial High School. If approved, the cost will not exceed two hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and seven cents, and this will be charged to the bond furniture fund, ESSER funds.
Is there a motion?
So move.
By Dr. Weaver, support?
Support.
Ms. May, discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion carries or passes?
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Cleaves. Next item on our agenda, two five four point two-two is a review and approval of human resource items. Mr. Kapulka?
Thank you, President Cox. Members of the board, in your packet in front of you is the tentative agreement. It's a three-year agreement with the BOSS Group, the Brotherhood of Specialized Skills. And then the overview is listed there. Part of the overview, it is a three-year contract, and after you have an opportunity to review, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a motion? So move. Move by Mr. Albrecht, support by Dr. Weaver, discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? President Cox?
Yes.
Six zero, motion passes.
Thank you, and thank you, Mike, for your work. We'll have more to say about that later.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, two five five point two-two is a review and approval of the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency, RISA, budget resolution. Dr. Dignan?
Yeah, the recommended motion was that the board approve the Wayne RISA two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget and waive the need to read the enclosed resolution.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Dr. Weaver, support?
Support.
By Mr. Albrecht, is there a discussion? Nobody wants to say how much money RISA's got?
It's a lot.
I would.
Okay.
Last month, I raised the issue of the, of the Act eighteen funding, but on balance, we don't have a better friend, friend of the state than Wayne County RISA. They are really good to Wayne Westland and to all of the districts in Wayne County, so without hesitation, I'm, I'm supporting this.
I feel like I have to say the same. I can tell you that just in the last three or four years, our school district was in a crisis situation, and Wayne County RISA was instrumental in helping us to make sure everybody was treated fairly and that, and they were a great resource for us, and I'll never forget the help we got from them, so you're certainly right. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes? President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six zero, motion passes.
Thanks, Mel.
Dr. Albrecht, did I name? Okay, I'm sorry.
Two, two, he's very agreeable, anyway. Yes. Two five six point two-two is the Superintendent's Reports and Comments. Dr. Dignan?
Thank you, President Cox. First, I just want to congratulate all the groups and individuals that were honored here today. I want to thank Mr. Schulte and Ms. Nalu for great presentations. I want to wish all the graduates of Wayne Westland Community, John Glenn, and Wayne Memorial High School the best on their graduation that's coming up here in the next few weeks and then the next step in their post-secondary journey. I'd like to thank Junior Achievement for allowing Franklin, Franklin Middle School to go to JA Finance Park six times this spring. They had incredible time, the pictures were outstanding. I'd like to thank EMU for having all of our fifth-grade students on campus for tours and doing STEM-related activities, starting tomorrow and running through Friday. I don't think they realize what they've gotten themselves into, but we'll see. We awarded the, we were awarded the grant for the John Glenn School-Based Health Clinic. I'd like to thank Beaumont for partnering with our district and securing the grant for the school-based health clinic. This year alone, and the people over here, kinda sitting in the stands here, are responsible for over six million dollars that we received in grants this year, which is, to me, incredible. If you hit one million, you're excited, but again, it's, it's really a compliment to all the work that they're doing on a daily basis. I want to thank the Smart Factory in Deloitte and Amazon for donating twenty-five Smart Rover Touchpoint Kids Arcade STEM Center. I'm really excited next year when we can launch it for all of our kids. I think it's gonna make a huge difference. I want to thank the team that met with Easter Seals of Michigan to solidify the start of services for next fall. Easter Seals is gonna start small, and they're providing one therapist at Wildwood Elementary, and everything else will be based on referrals. I want to thank Amanda Divas, Daryl Beebe, and our Mental Health Task Force for all the Mental Health Awareness Month activities that were planned. There was a lot of hard work put into that. Like to say thank you to Stevenson Middle School accelerated social studies students for their exhibit at the Westland Historical Commission and Society last Thursday. I really want to thank their amazing teacher, Sharon Sullivan. If, if you ever get a chance, what they did, I, I actually thought was professionally done, and they had some help from our Career Tech students. We had over two hundred high school students from Wayne Memorial, John Glenn, and Career Tech that attended the rapid SME conference in Detroit last Wednesday. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Heinz, who's been named Inkster's Director of Special Projects. It's a great honor, congratulations.
Thank you.
But most importantly, I'd like to say thank you for everything people have done to support our school district this year. I want to thank the people for their partnership in getting us to this point. Our teachers, nurses, counselors, custodians, secretaries, support staff, bus drivers, administrators, cafeteria workers have been the real superheroes. If you get a chance, I'm hoping that you can thank them before we end the school year. And again, I really appreciate them keeping us safe and keeping our kids learning over the last two years. So I'm gonna end it on that note, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is two five seven point two-two. This portion is reserved for anyone wishing to address the board on items which are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the board tonight? Emily? If you could hand it to Mr. Buckaloo, Emily?
Thank you. We have Ms. Emlyn, is it Bowman?
Bowman.
Bowman, I'm sorry, Ms. Emily Bowman.
Thank you. It's actually the first time I've addressed the school board like this. I'm Emily Bowman, I am a resident of Westland, as well as a parent, and I happen to be a candidate for State Senate, but I'm talking tonight, I wanted to, one, it was an exciting meeting, I gotta tell you. This was definitely, when you came here, it was so full. I, I was a little bummed that they all left, because I thought, oh, it's, I mean, I teach debate at another, in another organization, and to have kids learn how a meeting is run and to watch that, it's incredible. So I, I, I was kind of bummed that they all left, but it was really exciting to see that, and I, 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 education is so important, and we all know that, but even those, the sports, the arts, and, you know, all those physical fitness, my husband always says, he's like, fitness for the rest of our lives, we need to encourage kids to do this, because to have that is so important. So I, I love that you guys did that recognition, and that they had the opportunity to be here and see that and feel that recognition. I did want to, I have one question, that I guess I'm just curious, on the Head Start program, is, you know, and you can ask it later, is, is there no part-time available? Because I appreciate that some parents would really like that full-time part, but there might be parents that would, that actually want to do a balance and have part inside in there, so I don't know if that's an option, I just, I just wanted to throw that out, that there are, there are parents that really want to slow, more slowly bring their kids into that full-time thing, and preschool is really important to still have some opportunity with parents if they want that. And I know a lot of schools have gone full-time for a lot of things, even kindergarten, but that slower opportunity, if a parent has the opportunity, you got, you got, sometimes you have to weigh both of them, I guess, and so I just want to think about that. And the other thing I wanted to just make a comment is, I've appreciated that Wayne Westland is not masked, and I know that RISA has made some recommendations recently due to the COVID changes. And a really good book that I've read is called Doctor of the Lesser Magistrates, and it's one of those, it's a book that talks about how police officers, school board members, anyone who has any kind of public, public position, has the opportunity to stand in the gap for people who might not be able to speak for themselves. And our children are so important that we give them that opportunity to have that flexibility And our children are so important, that we give them that opportunity to have that flexibility to say, this is right for me, this is not right for me, and teach them the how-to-think, not what-to-think idea. And I just want to encourage that, you know, you stand strong on anything and in the influence, and really stand in the gap for the people, especially the children, who, we just can't just blanketly do something for them. And I just, I'm just going to encourage that we actually really think this through, if it comes up. And I know I'm bringing something up that wasn't discussed tonight, I get that, but we do, I mean, RISA did announce that there was a recommendation. I just want to really be encouraging that we do this, because otherwise, we're asking our kids to burden something that they're not ready to burden. We're also asking our kids to shoulder understanding, like a, a, a value system. We're asking them to maybe challenge their value system, or their parents' value systems, for something someone else wants. And I just think we need to balance that. If we're balancing this idea of you're important and you're important, we need to balance it all the way through. So I don't know how much, I appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to the review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Ms. May?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to first start by just saying congratulations to our students that were here this evening. That was such a wonderful way to end the school year. So, Dr. Dignan, thank you for lifting our students in that way. It was nice to have a packed board meeting, and it to be such a joyful occasion, so I'm grateful and happy for that. The next thing I'd like to talk about is just to just say congratulations to our 2022 graduates, and I am excited to participate in a graduation, that is a non-COVID graduation. It will be my first one, so I'm excited for that. And then, Dr. Dignan, you talked about $6 million in grants, and just hearing all the great things that are happening in the district, the partnerships. I remember when Mr. Toco stood before us and did the presentation for the partnership with the NFL flag, and having the opportunity to attend a couple of NFL football games, and just seeing our families out and our kids, and just having such a good time, and I just want to say thank you. This has probably been the roughest school year since we've been in this pandemic. And we have made it, and we've made it with a smile on our faces. Our kids are happy. I know our staff is tired, but they have done a phenomenal job, and so I just want to say thank you. And that is it for me.
Thank you, Ms. May. Well, Mr. Buckaloo, what do you have to say to that?
Why did I have to go second? Well, thanks, Madison. Thanks, Jeffrey, from, from South Galloway. And thanks, Principal Cox, for bringing those kids to us this evening to get us off to a great start. We recognized a few students tonight. I counted nine different groups. Somehow, someone got the impression that I was partial to the wrestling team, and I don't know where that comes from. But they all did well. And, and you added, Dr. Dignan, you added other groups that are, were equally deserving of being here and being recognized tonight. Great things are happening in our school district, and our kids are doing great things. And that's, that's worth taking note of. It truly is. And honestly, the one thing that stuck out most in my mind was the English learner part of the presentation. I can think back to my days as a classroom teacher, when I would be given a student who didn't speak English. I did the best I could. The thing is, I didn't have a clue. We've changed that now. We have a program in place, and we're developing it, we're moving forward with it. And I think teachers going forward won't have the experience that I had. More importantly, those students who come to us with, with problems with English language aren't going to have the difficulties that the students I taught some years back had. So I'm really pleased with that. I'm also pleased with the fact that those nine groups represented three different high schools. And so something positive is going on, not only at Career Tech, but at the two traditional high schools as well. Pleased with that. Our purchases, we had eight different purchases today, or at least eight financial items. Should take note that they were funded by Title I funds, by grants from Ford, William D. Ford, by bond money, and by ESER funds. Our people who are making these purchases, these financial decisions, are using all of the resources available to them, and in the most cogent, wise way possible. And I couldn't, you know, I'm always impressed with that sort of thing. And all of the purchases were either done through a consortium bid or through a public bid. We're spending the money wisely, and the community needs to know that. We're not, we're not wasting any money anywhere. Lastly, this is the end of the school year. The next time we meet, students will not be in school. So my message is, be safe out there, enjoy your summer, and come back at the beginning of next school year, ready to go. One final thing I guess I should say. Congratulations, Mr. Spiezak. If you don't know, Mr. Spiezak is Alumni of the Year at Wayne Memorial High School.
Should have to go up to the podium.
We're going to do that at graduation. Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you. We all know that Mr. Spiezak is the man. Congratulations on that. I really just want to say that I'm thankful for all the presentations tonight about the good things that are happening in our district. Even the bowling team, I mean, you know, every, every aspect. And I'm especially excited about the English learners and that program, because we do have, I think, quite a few students that come to us that are not versed in the English language. So I'm thankful for that, too. Thank you.
Mel?
Yes, this was one of the best board meetings of the year. It was so nice to see all of our students, all their synergy is awakening. I am so excited for the class of 2022. My son is graduating, and Wayne Westland has been pivotal and amazing in the success of my son. I'd like to thank Dr. Dignan, because I'm like, Dr. Dignan, I need to find something for my son. So he taught me about the Carpenter and Millwright, so I'm going to put him in that program. They start off at $19 an hour. They have full benefits, pensions. The training is provided, so no student loan debt. And then after four years, we're making like $42 an hour, so. And with those different career fairs that you've had, John, it's been amazing, because these are high-paying jobs. Like the last one, they had Kern, starting off at $19 an hour, Ajax, $17 an hour, full-pay training, six weeks, good jobs, good careers, good futures. So the district is amazing. I brag about you guys everywhere. I say we're the best school district in the county, and hands down, we have the best staff, board members, I mean, a lot of dedication. Also, I like to, I love the idea with the sports, that has been amazing. I mean, because with COVID, the kids were suffering from depression, not being able to get out. So you guys have given them something new, exercise, you know, really. And the nice thing, too, you start them off early, so when they're getting in high school, they'll be ready for those scholarships, you know, so, good job. I was able to go to the HBCU event that they had not too long ago. I was able to participate in the Wayne Westland Community Foundation with the wine tasting, which was amazing. You guys did such a good job really putting that together, so I'm really hoping it's going to be an annual thing. The English learner program is amazing. I'm just really excited that you guys sat together and created a program. You guys started from the bottom, and you just built something that's going to be helping us in the future. And I also like to say, I am excited about my new position as the Director of Special Products for the City of Inkster, because I grew up in Inkster, went to Wayne Westland Schools, and now I can give back to the city. I used to be a police officer, my husband was a police officer, so it's just nice to give back. And on that side, to talk about how Wayne Westland is the best school district, because they lost their school district, and they're like, we don't have schools. You have Wayne Westland in your own backyard, it's already been there. And Dr. Dignan gave like the best presentation ever at the city council meeting, and they were like, oh my gosh, you guys have these programs? I'm like, yes, hello, where you been? So, you know, heads up, you guys are the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, President Cox. Thanks to Madison and Jeffrey for leading the pledge. That was exceptional. I too want to say congratulations to all the students from Wayne Memorial, John Glenn, William D. Ford, for all of their accomplishments. It is the end of the year, which makes me think about what it might look like if we keep having students accomplish those things. Next year in May, we may have to move this meeting, or improve the air conditioning. I'm not sure which one it is. Thanks to the district leadership for its vision in providing the extracurricular opportunities for kids that didn't have it before. I believe the numbers, if you added them up, probably more than a thousand. And that gets them to believe in their school, to make it feel like it's home to them. And I want to thank all of you for the work you did, in particular, the volunteers who made that happen so that the events took place. Sally? Couple hours ago, you and I had a conversation, and it was, I think we talked a little bit about where we go to eat, and you're kind of tired and just want to go home to eat. I know that you were only allowed five minutes. But knowing a little, knowing a little bit about that, as Ms. May does, in seven or eight weeks or nine weeks' time, probably seventy hours a week, minimal. And it showed in that little presentation that took only five minutes. Thank you for your work. That's all I have.
You know, the things that I could say tonight after the meeting that we've had, and the presentations to the children, and all the things that these students are accomplishing, and the excitement that their educators have, it wouldn't be fair, because everybody in this district is working like that. I could talk about everybody in this room and what they're doing. We talked about Mr. Spiezak earlier. When we first decided how we were going to administer the implementation of the bond, you know, the twenty-year bond and the millions upon millions of dollars we're going to be spending, we considered hiring somebody to manage it on our side, and that didn't happen. And what you've seen is our staff, Ms. Cleaves, Mr. Spiezak, their teams, the administration, Dr. Dignan, running a school district, and by the way, spending a hundred million dollars building something. It's just remarkable how, and of course, the people that we have doing this work, McCarthy and Smith are exceptional. TMP is the architect, exceptional, they're all the best there is. But have you heard a peep out of this entire project? Congratulations, really. Well done. It's well managed. It's so nice to see. And Mr. Buckaloo said something this evening regarding the, how we're spending the money. And what he's referring to is, you know, once the bond was approved, we had the money, and we had the ability to spend it. But when the bids started coming in, and they weren't coming in at where we projected, we waited. We just stopped the hope, rather than being the first one in and paying the high dollar, we stopped it, pulled back, let the market adjust a little bit. That's what he's talking about. So what the community believed they were going to be getting is, is what they're going to be getting under the circumstances, so. Dr. Dignan, I really appreciate the fact that we saw presentations not just from successful sport teams, but from all the, frankly, I had no idea the need in English learners, the numbers, they were remarkable to me. I wouldn't have guessed it, frankly. So, and all I could think about is all the years that we didn't have that. And while we have it now, and all you can do is move forward, and I'm very excited, I'm excited that you get a little bit of time at that microphone for the citizens who are otherwise occupied to learn what kind of work we're doing here. Thank you, everyone. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Hold on, I got Mr. Buckaloo saying something.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I was, private conversation.
He was trying to remember eighteen sixty-four when he won the state.
Mr. Albrecht's trying to withdraw his motion to adjourn, but the chair is not going to hear it. Is there, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.